All right, welcome everyone. I'd like to call the February 2020 work session to order. I'd like to welcome all our guests today. Glad to have you here with us. All right.
We don't let our guests sit.
Y'all can sit down. You don't need to be so close to the screen. It is cold. All right. I would turn the meeting over to our superintendent, Mark Stefani.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Etheridge, board members. Today, we have, at the request of Mr. Old, he would like to make a presentation about some of the development plans up in the Moyac area and how the Board of Education might be involved in those plans and some information he made earlier. Mr. Old, in company.
Company, got the crew with me. Thank you, guys. I guess, you standing, you got your stuff here? All right. My name is Justin Old. Thank you. We are part of the Flora Development. This is Mark Bissel with Bissel Engineering. First and foremost, thank you, Board and Chair and Mr. Stefani for allowing us in here this evening to go over an overview of a new development we're proposing in Moyac area. We've been kind of hit with a few unique challenges, so we're looking out to the Board for some guidance and suggestions and, you know, what have you and how to overcome some of these challenges. So Mark and his staff has presented or prepared a presentation, and we'd like to give a little overview of everything then you'll have a better understanding of where we're at and how, you know, we can move forward. Do we need the lights now?
Can we dim the lights so that this shows up a little better?
Oh, yeah.
Better?
Kurt. Can everybody see it?
Yes.
Well, this is an outline of the presentation, and we're going to make it pretty brief and then open it up for discussion and questions at the end. We're going to show you an overview of what the development plan is. We have prepared a map that shows the current school attendance zones and then applied that map to the Flora, the Flora Development. We have done some projections on student generation and whoever, how we developed those or what has already been approved by the county commissioners for the FOST development and then what happens when Flora and FOST are both development, both developed, and then kind of summarize that over the next four or five years. And we have some conclusions. So this is the current development plan for the Flora property. Just to get you oriented, this is Eagle Creek and ranchland that wraps around this end. Up to, there's no pointers, I'm going to have to stand here and do it this way. This is 168. This is Survey Road. This is where we're showing 22 acres being reserved for an additional school right next to the middle school, which is right here. The FOST development, which was recently approved, is this adjoining tract at the bottom of the screen. So what we're proposing here is a mixed-use development. We have about up to 100,000 square feet of commercial proposed in the front that will have some upper-story dwelling units, apartments, and those kinds of things. In the back is more traditional single-family. And you see in the green with a network of roadways and ponds and amenities and so forth. About 285 lots. This next one is just a close-up of the commercial element in the front. And again, this is the proposed school site. We have a main entrance coming off of Survey Road. We'll be doing some improvements to the road to improve the turning movements in and out of here. We'll have a divided boulevard. The school will have the ability to access both Survey Road and a new boulevard that's intended to access the development as you go to the commercial and then with residential, any kind of. Conceptually, this is the kind of commercial development that we're proposing there. Architects' rendering of this, we're hoping to develop kind of a Main Street, streetscape, where you would have commercial storefronts with apartments up above. You could have outdoor side-on cafes and those kinds of things. It would be a community that would be more or less self-sufficient. But that's the concept. We think this would be a great place for some of the, some of the units would be set aside for teachers or public safety personnel that we know have difficulty finding places to live in Moyac. This is a map of the school zones, the attendance zones. In pink, you have the Moyac Attendance Zone. In blue, the Shawboro. And in green, the Central with also the locations of those schools shown on here in the darker colors. And the line between Moyac and Shawboro actually runs through the middle of this property. That's the heavy dash black line. This is, again, the line between Flora and FOST. And then it runs over here through the Flora property to Eagle Creek. So this has been color-coded to match the school attendance zones. The lots that you see in the light blue are in the Shawboro Attendance Zone. And the lots in the pink are in the Moyac Attendance Zone. There's about 114 in Shawboro. And this is going to be difficult to see, so I'm going to give you a handout. So what we're trying to do here is to figure out what is the student generation going to look like. And this first one is the FOST development that's already been approved. This is granted a use permit by the county commissioners and for the first five phases. And what we have done here is say, well, how does that translate into student population? So if you look, we've done this color-coded bar chart on how that works. The tan color shows development. And we're here now, we're getting ready to start development. And when that flap goes to record, which is at the end of that first tan-colored bar, we'll start pre-sales and model home development. And that's the green bar. And then, once the model home is constructed and pre-sales have been done, the blue represents homes that are being custom-built for the buyers. And then, at the end of each of those, we're showing occupancy by month. So you'll see at the end of the first bar, the first blue bar, which is occurring in August of 2021, is when we're projecting the first occupancy of 10 homes. And in the meantime, you know, we're starting the second phase and so forth. You're showing, again, pre-marketing, pre-sales in green, and home construction in blue. So this is spread out over the school year. Then we're showing that there will be new students, of course, generated this year or next year. The following year, we're projecting, I believe it's 17. For the 21, 22 school year, about 25 students. And this is based on occupying 10 homes a month. So again, again. August of 2021. Does that make sense?
Yeah, Mark, what we're looking at is behind the numbers, like, say, Phase 1, and you've got in the blue the 10 occupancy units, and then the 18 and the 10s, and then the 1. What is that representing?
The black numbers are projected home occupancy. The red numbers are projected students. The number of students that would be enrolled for that school year.
Are you talking about elementary only?
Elementary. Yes, and we were just focusing on elementary.
So you're projecting 10 units per month, basically?
Which we were trying to do a pretty aggressive or conservative approach, you know, which we, I mean, I think 10 a month is very aggressive.
And so.
Are you still using the formula, half a child per household?
It's.
We're using the TESL study, which I think is.
It's .25 for elementary.
Okay, okay.
A quarter for elementary.
Quarter for elementary.
Half of any age.
Okay.
And I think we also assume on this sheet that, so we know that, you know, school opens. I think Mark was going to probably. We're going to, I know you were going to hit on that, too.
Yeah, so school opens in, what, August or September? And we're showing that all the students that are enrolled up until, if people move in in October through February, all of those students would enroll in that previous school year. The ones that enroll, that move in the last couple of months of the year, maybe half of them would enroll and half of them will stay where they are until the end of that year. So that's how this is figured. That's where the 18 students came from. And then we did the same thing for Phase 2, 3, and 4, and 5. So that is how we're projecting the occupancy of what's already been approved. Then we wanted to look and see what happens if we add Flora Development to that. And there's also Phases 6 through 9 of FOST that have a master plan approved, not yet a development plan approved. So this is a little busy, but it's basically the same chart, the same philosophy, with just two more developments added to it. And we're assuming that right here, in the, in August of 2023, a new school will be ready to come online. So the main thing that we're concerned about here, let me just move you to the summary sheet. I don't want to get bogged down in the numbers. As we can see, we've done our homework on it. So for FOST, Phases 1 through 5, so for 2021, we don't have any students. For 21, 22, we're projecting 25. For 2022 to 23, 27. And then, if Flora gets approved, it's about a year behind FOST in the development schedule. We're projecting that 17 students could potentially be enrolled for the 22, 23 school year. And then this line represents when the new school would come online, and the 23, 24 students would presumably be in the school. So what this shows is that there would be 25 additional students for the 21, 22 school year and about 44 for the 22, 23 school year. A total of about 69 total before the new school is ready to come online in 2023. And that 69 students is actually less than the 75 students that have been projected and approved as part of the FOST. Phase 1 through 5 development plan is projecting 25, 75 students. But by spreading this out, we're showing how potentially the first couple of phases of Flora could also be developed within that time frame and still stay within the available school capacity.
But that doesn't take into consideration all the other things that are happening at the same time, right? What I'm saying is, that's assuming that we're just looking at that. Those two developments and the capacities of the schools that we currently have on hold.
Yes, the county planning staff has factored the committed capacity.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to reflect that as a matter of being sure.
Yes. This is just, this is what's. Yes, sir. Jacob, the two developments.
For the used development. Any questions, concerns? Anyone have any questions or concerns?
I have one question. I know you've got all this all planned out. And I actually have a cousin-in-law who has a wife who got a house through something that Dare County offers. Their teachers and EMS people, their service people. Have you ever done any of that?
We haven't on the single family, but we have in our, in our terms and conditions through the application with the Board of Commissioners in Currituck County, we have, we have committed to allocating 10% of that housing type to teachers, EMS, police and stuff. From the original slides, you saw the multifamily stuff. So we have, because it is a need, you know, for affordable safe rentals in this area. So we, on our own terms, decided that we did want to allocate a portion of those to reserve so that, you know, you guys could have a portfolio or the police could have a portfolio of safe rentals at all times.
I looked on the Dare County website, and they, I think they actually own, like, multi-units. But then they have something else in place, and I wasn't able to find out exactly what it was. But they, they sell a house or two at a really good price to a teacher or a firefighter or an EMT. And affordable housing is a huge problem for our teachers. You know, I don't even know, what is the average take-home pay for a teacher now, starting out?
Million six.
Forget the affordable housing.
35, I think.
35, starting salary.
Yeah, 35.
But that's not taken.
No, that's your Rose.
So they might bring home a couple thousand a month, maybe 2,200. And I know rent in Currituck is anywhere from 1,200 to 1,800. So it's, you know.
It makes it tough.
It's tough on our people, and that's a teacher.
Yeah.
Not a teacher assistant who makes even less, or a custodian, or.
Just so the Board knows, Justin and I had a conversation, and I've had conversations with other developers who are looking at apartments or townhomes as part of their development, that we would be more than pleased to have, you know, some set aside or the school system get first dibs. It would be more of a dorm style. Because if, you know, Miss Kraft was a new teacher in a given year, and I was, well, I couldn't. If Janet was a.
Yes, you could.
Yeah, we're not going there. But if Miss Kraft was a new teacher and then Miss Rose was a new teacher, and they don't know each other, then if we could offer something like, you know, a third of a $1,200 or $1,500 rent rather than the full $1,500 rent, that would help their beginning teacher pay stretch a lot longer.
I, I think that Dare County has actually bought, like, units, you know, and they rent them out to teachers a little bit, similar to what our teachers just were.
But I think that, and I remember when that happened, Janet, when the first flight was being built. And I believe that was a grant. That's how they got around that.
Well, I know some of those were built by the state employees credit. And they had a program that centers that for a teacher.
Justin, how many multifamily units do you have?
Right now, conceptually, it's about 125.
So 120, you would set aside 10% for housing?
At least 10%. We've conditioned ourselves to do 10%, but if it's a need for it, then, you know.
And how would you base the rental amount? Would you just base it on market, or would you?
It would be market-driven, but obviously, you know, the rental in a one-bedroom or two-bedroom or three-bedroom apartment unit is going to be substantially different than a single-family level. And, you know, and that's something we haven't really dove into yet, but it would certainly be more appealing for the workforce.
So, but these will be both for lease and for sale? And for the ones that are, you're going to be selling, have you talked about your HOA fees?
I think primarily these units here are going to be offered for lease. The single families, obviously, will be for sale, but the intent of these are to be rented.
Would you entertain the idea of something like they did in Mania, where you'd sell a single-family home or to an EMT or a deputy or?
Sure.
At a much ado strait.
I remember you, we had heard about it, but I mean, I don't really know the, you know, the guts of it. But yeah, we would certainly be willing to sit down and talk and see what that platform is and possibly, you know, not only in the front section, but in the back section, do something with, you know.
I just, I just think it would be a nice, nice perk for the county. And it looks like the drawings and everything are top-notch. And I think for our EMS personnel and our teachers, those that are doing so much for our county, there's not a lot of perks that we offer. So I like, I like your idea.
So, and like I said, if we saw a need, you know, we put in 10% in our condition, so we would be obligated to that. But if we did see a need, we can adjust that bar up. And I think there is a higher need, honestly.
There is.
Just talking with, you know, some of those sheriffs, sheriffs are in the same boat. I mean, they, you know, state troopers, they're all in the same boat. So I mean, I think it's definitely a need in this area. The one thing Mark kind of breezed over, can you go back to that slide with the, with the school?
Oh, dear.
So.
Yeah, I was waiting to come back to that.
Yeah, this is kind of what we're looking for some insight on. Obviously, you know, where this is located demographically, through this, I mean, almost center of it is the district line. And we've made a district map, too, and all this stuff, we can get you guys, you know, with the PDFs or the email copies. So this is kind of where we're looking for some guidance from the Board on, you know, specifically. What.
We're hoping that a finding could be, or that two findings could be made. One, that the first couple of phases of Flora could be accommodated prior to the opening of the new school. But secondly, the consideration could be given to modifying which of those lots would be eligible to be in that Shawboro School District. Because right now, you, like I said, there's about 114, but they're in the back. And it could be developed back to front, but it'd be more logical to develop it front to back, which means we could also get to the first phase of the apartment.
I think we need to be real careful about that, because I would suggest you start with the ones that already have that and sell those first. Because I don't want to get involved with anything where we're showing any kind of, we did this favoritism. So if you can do it, which I think you can, is to start from the back and move forward. I know that would probably cost you more for development improvements, but I'd probably steer clear of it. But the input from the other Board members, I'd like to hear from them.
Well, I think we have to look at not just, not just the students, but the fact that we'll be having to change bus routes and that kind of thing when we do that. And of course, then we get into the, the.
Efficiency.
Efficiency rating of the buses, yeah. So I kind of am like you. I'd rather not have to look like we were trying to move things around just, you know, to.
Yeah, because, I don't know if you guys are aware of this, but our district, as many, all the other districts in North Carolina, they face some very big challenges when you're, particularly in the rural area, busing. So it might seem like, yeah, we could just move this line and put these kids at this different school, even though obviously sometimes you disrupt families, and that's going to be bad enough, not to understate that. But they're requiring us, DPI, to adhere to this bus efficiency law. So when we don't, they penalize us in back charges. So let's say, for example, we wanted to use local dollars to fund additional teachers or teachers' aides or textbooks. We can do that without being penalized. We could fund ministers. But as soon as we give a bus driver a raise, or we add a bus, or we put a few less students on a bus to make the ride more comfortable, even though it doesn't make sense, we spend $500,000 and then we get penalized another $250,000. So we're faced with a really different, difficult challenge with that. In fact, we got some legislation, we're working with Bobby Henneke on trying to get a waiver for that. But Currituck, unfortunately, is faced with three unique challenges that no other school system's faced with, is that not only are we long and linked, very long, 50-plus miles, but part of our ridership has to be picked up through another county in the south. And the other ridership has to be picked up through another state. So we're trying to get some relief, but sometimes it's more to it than just what you might have viewed. How's that?
Yeah.
Very difficult.
Any other questions?
I do like your renderings. I think it looks like a top-notch project. I'm sure that a lot of people would really like some of what you've proposed there on the commercial and residential. I'm seeing a lot of that, particularly coming up through Southern Chesapeake.
Yeah.
And this central area, it's coming right on up. So I'm seeing a lot of similarities there.
Yes, it's really nice.
One question, though. On, so right now, the back section is Shawboro, correct? And the front is Moyac. From a bus route standpoint, how would, if they got to come in and go to the back, why would that be less efficient than going to the front?
Well, we don't know for sure. We'd have to chat, chat with Matt, here's Matt.
And next door, Shawboro.
Some of these schools are running on staggered times to try to use this same bus. I don't have all the information. In fact, Pete, at the last meeting, I requested him send me some stuff so I could get a little bit more understanding about it. I read through two of our presentations. I'm still trying to wrap my brain around it. I'll be honest with you. And I'm kind of a data guy.
Yeah.
And I'm having a hard time understanding why they would ever do such a dastardly thing, because it's got to have a negative impact on so many school systems. But I hear what you're saying. I just know that kids are riding the bus right now from Central with over an hour of time in the morning and the evening, and I'm not a fan of it. And I think what we need to do is look at it more closely. And I don't think anybody's prepared to get in a discussion right now or further.
No, no, no.
What we're trying to do is make sure that the decisions we make have a better ridership time and with the restraints that we're faced.
And is there for the students?
Yes.
Yeah, if there's additional information or this stuff you want to get, you know, printed or emailed so you can, you better understand it. If you've got questions in specific, we'd be happy to, you know, sit down and chat with you. Or if you don't understand some of the graphs we did, we're very, they're a little engineers.
Well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate your time, too. Thanks, I hope we didn't bore you too, man.
Great information.
And any insight or, you know, criticism, we greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, item B, we have school capacity procedures.
Yes, Board members, when you came in, you should have found a second paper with your agenda on the table. This represents the first draft of some of the conversations we had at the special work session. Chairman, we're going to talk. Yeah. So we talked about what types of actions would be kicked in when a school reached 90% of their student capacity and what would happen when they hit 95% of the student capacity. So I tried to take all the notes and the comments from the special meeting and put it into this call of policy, call of procedure, whatever the Board decides to label it. And then it would be what we could communicate to the community, the Board of Commissioners, impacted families, so that they know exactly what we were going to be doing. But again, this is a first draft. Give you a chance to read it, and then we set up our next special meeting. We can make revisions to it, and then we can work to finalize it, you know, by the end of the month.
Would this be like a part of your student handbook?
And again, there's the policy, and then sometimes they call them administrative guidelines or administrative procedures. And again, there's, there's policy, and then sometimes they call them administrative guidelines or administrative procedures. You can declare that this is either, um, an administrative guideline off of the capacity and boundary policy you already have, or you can create a, a policy that has a number like one different than that one, and they pair it together in the policy manual. Either way, we put it into effect, whether it's a guideline or a policy.
Are we gonna, um, have any part of this where we need to seek any other comment, like if?
Yes.
Points?
Yeah.
Will that be part of the policy?
Yes, we can, that's, again, those are the types of revisions I'm looking for, and so if you see that, uh, there's something like that that isn't clear enough, uh, for the, the general public, we can show where to insert that into the, into the procedure.
Well, it says here, following the special meeting, we'll communicate any additional plans to address the large student population to commissioners and impacted families.
I saw the part about impacted, that's assuming that decision's already final. I'll never know.
He's talking about like, as.
Prior to making the decision.
As you're considering your options to deal with a certain school's large capacity.
Good, good, you have to look into it, like a town meeting.
Yes, yes. And with that being said, just, just so everybody hears, typically when you're, you're doing school boundaries or school assignments, nine times out of ten, the, the people that are impacted by those changes, they don't like the changes. Uh, and the people that get to stay put, they're fine with the change. Uh, and so, you know, when, when you go to accept the input, you, you might, you have a little taste of that, uh, you know, with some of the input from the parents.
Yeah, and we've seen some of that, but even still, I think it would be important, and I think we should, um, we might hear a compelling situation that we might not otherwise take into consideration.
Sure. Sure. And that, yeah, it's a good idea to have.
Always good to get their input.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. All right, calendar discussions for two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Mrs. Renee Doughty, our Assistant Superintendent.
All right, so it is that time of the year where we are once again drafting academic calendars for the twenty twenty-one school year. Um, we have, with the help of some of our administrators, again, the ver, drafted the versions. Our goal again to put out a version one, version two. Um, what we wanted to let you know is that this week by Friday, we hope to have those, um, versions of calendars out to staff, to garner feedback from staff, um, and then be able, either in the special meeting, that I'm assuming maybe we'll set a date for for that special planning meeting that we just talked about in item B, to be able to come back to the table and present with you in the hopes that Mark can adopt our twenty twenty-one, uh, academic calendars. With Super Bowl Monday.
Work, work, uh, uh, optional workday, Super Bowl Monday?
That was Will's request, yeah.
I just thought it would be nice. Cause if we ended on Wednesday, and I was like, you know.
Anything for March Madness?
No, I mean, I just thought, you know.
I, I will say, some of the things that we looked at in talking about high school calendars, uh, with Dr. Matney, the board had asked about specifically those LEAs or school districts who had adopted calendar flexibility and reviewing some of that information. So, I have reached out to a number of them, uh, Mr. Randy Woods, Mrs. Principal, Rowan Salisbury, and they're the turnaround district that actually went to a whole district turnaround. So, they all got calendar flexibility, so I've had some discussions with him. It's just year one, so there's no data to say, EOGs look better, or EOCs look better after this year as compared to years in the past. And again, there's gonna be so many other factors, and we're not gonna ensure if it's the turnaround model that had the impact or it's the calendar that had the impact, so there's gonna be a lot for us to look at. Um, but I have had discussions with them, I also had discussions with Green County outside of Pitt. Um, they use a different model in which they frontload, um, or shorten their first semester, so it does finish before Christmas break, but then extend that second semester, so they have not had to request calendar flexibility, because they figure we're gonna play within the constraints that we have, but we're gonna finish semester one before Christmas break. So, they actually have a eighty to a, a one hundred day calendar, so their first semester's an eighty day semester, their second semester's a hundred day semester. They frontload with scheduling their honors classes in that fall semester, and then their regular EOCs in the spring. So, we're looking at some different creative options to look at what that would look like. If we can't beat the game, we'll beat the system, um, and play within the red tape. So, we've got some versions looking at, just to have some discussions with staff around. If we don't get calendar flexibility, could we still look at something where we could try to finish first semester before Christmas break?
So, if you did that, then those classes in the first semester would not have as much instructional time?
Exactly right. Yep. Yep. And so, that's what, that's what Green County does with theirs, and they put only their honors sections of their EOC courses in the fall. So, honors English two, honors biology, and honors math one, math three would be taught in the fall semester. Your other ones, all your regular sections of those EOC courses are taught in the hundred day semester in the spring.
So, what about the kids that aren't taking honors? They wouldn't be able, what would they do in the fall?
They'll take, like, so it was, it would differentiate, so like, they may have regular biology in the spring, but they may have something else in the fall, or year long sections, or. We could be creative as we want to get, to see if that model would work. Greens has success, they are, they've seen useful growth. Again, whether that's attributed to finishing a semester between, before Christmas break, or lots of other factors, you know, I don't think that we'll ever really be able to say it's one or the other, but just food for thought.
I think it is.
I mean, it's just not, yeah, opinion.
I thought we were gonna look at, uh.
Finish it up before Christmas. So, that was your idea?
I was saying, I thought it was a way that instead of actually, oh, year round, I thought we could call it year round, wasn't that Bill?
Well, I was the one that asked you to check into it.
Yeah.
See if there's somewhere around.
So, we're gonna start earlier, have the semester finished before Christmas.
Yeah, there are some, there, there are some rebel, um, school districts, we'll call them that.
Which are you?
That, that are, that are in the state.
I prefer the outside of the box.
They've challenged, they've challenged the law, and basically what they do is all the activities that typically happen over the summer, summer school, teacher PB, things like that, they, um, online classes, they mix all those days together with their regular school year calendar, and they're claiming to be year round schools. Uh, and, and so they're, they're claiming all of that stuff, and at superintendent's regional meetings, you know, we all sit there and, you know, try to bite your fingernails and go like, do we wanna be one of those rebel school districts? Or we wanna sit and watch the first five or six and see how much trouble they get in? You know, before we, before we jump on that, that bandwagon. And so, so most, most of the northeast region said, we'll kind of watch the center in the west and see what they're doing.
Well, I thought you'd be watching, and nothing was really happening, so we were gonna consider putting our toes in the water.
So, I think even still.
To date, nothing was happening.
And even if we did, we're too late in the game right now to make that happen for August of this year, because it's a, it's a complete shift and turnaround for every parent who's already got vacations planned that's already happening in that first week of August. I think that we would have to make that for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, if that's what we wanted to do, with saying, hey, we're gonna go for it.
And this would be elementary and high school on the same calendar?
If, if we did, if we had calendar flexibility, we'd all be on the exact same calendar.
Exactly.
Exact same.
And COA, pretty much, or pretty close, yeah. But the problem, the reason we get nervous as superintendents is a lot of times, the way the state penalizes you is in allocations. Uh, and so, if you're not following said allocation, then they can say, well, then you're not getting this percent, you know, of your state money, and that's where it gets scary.
Yeah.
Uh, and so that's why there's not too many that, you know, wanna jump into that, that risk pool, so to speak.
Well, that's understandable, but still, finish it before Christmas, however you do it, I think would be, uh, love serving students.
I think they would love it, not having any assignments over Christmas break?
Yeah.
And all that being done.
When you come to that, if you finish before Christmas break, and that's like all your honors classes for biology, math one, whatever, what about all your other classes? I'm concerned you're thinking about that, so I'm confused. So, so I have Green County's master schedule for us to kind of look around and play around with, cause one, we may not be staff the exact same way they are, so it might not even be something that you can feasibly pull off in a section. And it might be that we say all of our English two classes are gonna wait until a certain timeframe for that to happen. So, I just think it's a possibility. They still, you know, I mean, kids still take biology in the fall, what that looks like, I don't know, and it may be more of a student data point. We look at our kids who have, uh, between a seventy and a hundred percent chance of passing the biology EOC, we put them in the fall semester, because we get those predictions on you guys and what you're predicting to score for certain courses. So, it may not just be an honors section, we may offer two regular sections for kids who are expected to be able to pass the biology EOC. Because we're basically saying, you're gonna get twenty less days of instruction and still be expected to pass this test, and it's scary. And the one thing that scares me the most about considering that, it takes one hurricane, and you've gone from a seventy-five instructional day calendar, basically, to who knows what, and it's even shorter, and that scares the daylights out of me.
Point of clarification, excuse me, the point of clarification is you're really ten days less. Eighty would be ten days less, it'd be twenty days less than the other semester, but if you're ten days less than a typical ninety.
Oh, yeah, yeah, but it would be, it, it's an eighty-one hundred split based on the way it's worked. And, and really, it's a seventy-five ninety-five, because you've got five days of exams or just exam days. So, really, it's a seventy-five ninety-five split.
Cause we, we're doing an hour in the calendar too, not, not a day calendar, so it's.
Remember, we've got that.
It's all that, it's all that.
Now, in, now, in the seventy-five day semester, we could all, always go to school from eight to eight. I mean, if you wanted to, and then.
Oh, yeah, that just is so.
Oh, my God.
Then, then they would, then they would have the, the same number of hours.
Their teachers always are being pretty much.
Have a fewer number of periods that first semester, but have them, uh, go for a longer length of time. And then the second semester, have more periods for a lesser time, save that average about.
Extending the school day now, really, we do have to think about our teachers.
Yeah, I don't like saying that.
Oh, no, that was, that was tongue in cheek, that was tongue in cheek.
He was kidding.
Yeah, but, but what Dr. Doughty was saying is right, if you have an hour, an hour and a half or an hour and forty-five minute class period rather than an hour, um, class period, um, you know, and so then your number of bells in the day for that eighty day semester, you have fewer bells for classes.
So, you have a different schedule for your first class or second semester.
Yeah, so you might have five classes in the, in the spring, and only three classes in the fall.
I'm sure Ms. Doughty will come up with lots of creative.
Oh, I have lots of crazy ideas to come up with.
Creative suggestions.
My teachers, like, Mr. Welder, crazy, because I really think about the Monday, Wednesday, Friday, Tuesday, Thursday college schedule.
Yeah.
Because that elongates those classes, so my Tuesday, Thursday classes are longer, just like in college, they're longer an hour and twenty minutes. My Monday, Wednesday, Friday classes are fifty minute increments. That would alleviate some of the things that Taylor's just brought about, like, how is that gonna work? That makes it easy, cause I can give you an hour and twenty minutes, two days a week, to get in the same amount of time as I did the fifty minute classes three days a week.
Kind of what our AP classes are doing now, AP.
Did you say two hour and twenty minutes? Which is two hundred and forty, is what you.
Two hour and twenty minute classes.
Uh-huh.
So, those classes meet twice a week for the hour and twenty minutes, and then the others are three fifty minute classes.
That's not the same.
I've been trying to figure that out.
It, it's not the same. That's, I, I suppose that's what you were saying, but. No, meaning, like, running those classes like a college schedule for students. Whether we still do that in a seventy-five day first semester, ninety-five day second semester.
You can play around with it and see. Okay. And Taylor, you're, that kind of answered your question.
I think so, just so you'd only basically have your honor classes in the fall, if we, if you were to model the green, but you would still run other classes in the fall as well, it's like a dual thing.
Oh, yes.
Okay. All your lefts and rights.
Yeah, yeah.
I was like, that would be my teacher's not teaching. So, basically, we're making calendar drafts out to get feedback from staff, that's important.
That is very important, good. It is, it's very important.
Thank you, cause I know that's a tough job to have.
And where else you are, make sure the K eight and the lots of the high school, so the days are, we're not gonna have any of those staggered days. We got it down to three this year.
And that's very nice.
Where you're not gonna make all the staff.
We have a plan, so it's not gonna be the three now.
So, families that have children with ages, they can do things, yeah.
All right, thank you, uh, budget format discussion?
It's primarily a, a, an information item. When we made our, our budget presentation to the board of commissioners, um, there were some questions about, um, the, the format having too many codes and, and not enough descriptor language. Uh, and so there was a, a request to look at different formats, um, that are out there. Larissa is scanning the state, uh, to see what's out there, uh, and, uh, we're doing some checking, because under the unified budget format, we've gotta see what kind of flexibility we have in the type of budget we produce, uh, because under that unified, uh, budget ordinance, all the budgets are supposed to look pretty much the same. Uh, and so we've gotta see how much flexibility we have in our presentation of the budget, uh, but we'll see what we can put in to make things a little clearer.
But can't, can't we give them a supplement that shows those codes and, and what they are?
Yeah, but they really were.
Oh, no, we do that, we, we do that, they, they get the same booklet of, of codes that, that we get, uh, and, and they're still looking for more clarity right in that original document.
Okay.
Uh, and so, um, we're, we're looking at what's out there as far as ideas and what we're allowed to do. Uh, and then, uh, we'll come and we'll bring those suggestions here, we'll bring those suggestions to the commissioners and see which ones they like.
And you have to go back and.
It's not only hard to read, but the amount of information they give you when you get to the line item is, uh, they, they test.
Yeah, they'll put one, uh, you know, what they have is they'll put like one phrase, you know, on, on a line item, but then when you do go to the chart of accounts, then there's a whole paragraph about what you're allowed to do with it, and some of those things don't line up with that original phrase, um, as, as closely as we would like them to. Uh, and I think they're trying to give some flexibility in certain line items, but then they didn't change the name of the, of the line item, so some people get confused when some of those expenditures go out, uh, that are permissible. So, we're gonna try, uh, and see what we can do to bring as much clarity to it as possible.
Uh, mental health staffing report.
Okay, this should have been in your packet. It's a very small chart. Little tiny, tiny box.
Yeah, solving that.
Yeah. Mental health personnel report.
Uh-huh.
We have been placed under a new state mandate, um, that says every year by February fifteenth, so it was very timely that we had this meeting on February the fifteenth, uh, that, uh, you're supposed to get a report about how many mental health personnel we have on staff, and how that has changed or not changed from the previous year. And so what you have here is you have school counselors, school nurses, school psychologists, school social workers. Those are the, um, those are the numbers we have, and there has been no change in any of those staffing levels since last year. And that's pretty much the law, that's, uh, that's if there's a.
Just that you notify us, not that they're gonna give us more money to increase it.
Well, no, there's, the finance office has a report that they have to fill out, and in March, then the state superintendent gives a report to the state board of education, uh, and then what they would do is possibly request uh, from the general assembly, uh, more, uh, more personnel in those areas. To give the board a little bit of background information, we're, we're, we're about four to five times below suggested national levels. Um, so just to give an example, it says there should be one school counselor for every two hundred and fifty students. Um, so that would mean, um, that Moyac Middle School would have two and a half, and Moyac Middle School has one. Uh, and so that's, that, that, those are some of the, the things that we're, that we're dealing with. But again, that's nationwide, I don't believe there is a state that, uh, across the board is meeting those, those student service numbers. Uh, but, uh, like the professional counselors association, medical associations and things, those are the requested targets, and, uh, and, and they're not there yet. And some of ours, like school psychologists, for example, we have one psychologist per follows, uh, you know, students and, uh, oh, excuse me.
Two.
Two thousand. One school psychologist for two thousand students, but it's supposed to be one for every four hundred students. And so that's, that's what folks are talking about, that, uh, some additional allocations are needed for these support personnel.
How much, uh, how many of these positions are above what were allocated?
Well, that's, uh, we'd have to go back and, and check allocations, because, um, as.
Cause usually we have more positions than what the state allocates us.
Right, right. What, what the thing is though, is the, the allocation here may come in dollars, uh, in official, like, an official chart for what the school gets. I believe that, uh, school nurses and school counselors, they may not be in that, in that chart of when you open up a school, the state will allocate, you know, this money, and so some of these positions might be a hundred percent or very close to it, local, uh, locally funded positions. There is some state money, but I don't believe it's based on an allocation, I think it's based on, here's some money to help you with.
Not per, not, specific number.
Yeah.
Or a specific number of personnel.
When, I mean, I, I, when you started talking about mental health personnel, I, I was kind of surprised to hear school counselors and school nurses, I mean, I, I get psychiatrists and social workers possibly, but when did they recruit nurses and? nurses and counselors and mental health?
I, I, I don't know, but, uh, cause I, I wasn't there when they drafted the, the legislation, so I mean, that's just what they told us to include in here. But school counselors at the elementary level, they do do a lot of mental health things. As they start to go up, school counselors sadly, uh, have been, um, charged with monitoring credits and, and school, um, schedules. And so when they throw the mental health component in there, some of them get overwhelmed because they're, they're, they're taking care of the academic counseling type needs.
Well, they are available.
Yeah, well, they're available for that, yeah.
Medications, haven't they?
Yeah, but at the elementary level primarily, you'll see a lot of mental health type things.
Yeah, nurses do the...
The mental health medicines.
Yeah, the non-health medicines.
And nurses are there when students come to the clinic for even anxiety or crisis reasons.
Right, I understand initial, but I was hopeful that it wasn't going to amount to they had to deal with that. On a more regular, in a building, if that's they go to.
It's a regular, unfortunately, I think you would be shocked at the difference between the visits for mental health versus academics.
I'm, um, I'm, I'm shocked, um, most every day as I learn more and more things that I wasn't, uh, aware of, quite honestly. Some, uh, often are not for good.
I think what you were saying is, were they going to ask the nurses to put on another hat and do something in addition to what they're already doing?
Well, I mean, that's kind of where I'm going, but also it's like, I just was kind of surprised that they were kind of grouped off the, I mean, when I went to school, the counselors were trying to help you figure out your schedule and pick out your lectures and plan for the next year and possibly... I'm not saying they're not doing that, Janet. I'm saying, but now it would seem that there's another title. And I'm saying, I'm not sure that as we've seen, uh, uptick of need for certain services as they expand. Maybe they're less out to their time, restraints are less able to deal with, uh, the things that were once their primary function, is where I'm going with it. It's just, uh...
What has been added to them?
No, I, I think what, what's been added is I come in in crisis and then anything I have scheduled for the rest of the day, a sitting as building principal, and that student comes in with crisis. Now, we have a protocol we follow that involves mobile crisis, that involves another team coming into our building to service that kid. I can't leave that kid alone because they're in crisis, there's somebody has to stay with that student until help arrives. It's, it's a, it's a scary daunting situation and we have a lot of students who are in crisis.
And so that's where, I guess, uh, for me, as some have noticed that over the past few years and seeing more of it, makes me wonder, uh, you know, there's so many situations that, uh, particularly reoccurring ones. It seems to be tasked in the expectation of the school system when in the private sector, you know, you go and you get certain treatment and I don't, I'm just saying, it's kind of all together.
Yeah, it's, it's a tangled, it's a, it's a very tangled, um, process with lots of moving parts and pieces. Um, and unfortunately, we do deal with a lot of it and it does take a task on all of our personnel, from an administrator to a teacher to a counselor, to our psychologist, to everybody under the sun. And, and if we had more psychologists who could be in every building and help with those things, that'd be a, that'd be a task for all.
But what I'm saying is, I'm not so certain that, that we want that many more psychiatrists and, you know, and maybe at some point we need, uh, psychiatrists with their facility to be able to articulate this in a better way. How's that?
Well, it's, here we're looking at it on the local level and as a nation, everybody's reaching out and saying mental illness is at the forefront, but it starts in our small community of Curta. So if we're not able to give our students the help they need, then it's a snowball that's rolling on the state, nation, and then that's why we have some of the problems that we do because we don't assist those kids at a younger age and it just progresses to where you have the problems that we've had with them.
I have a question, a question that kind of beats off of this, I guess, is these problems that our children are having. I know we're doing all we can to help them, but sometimes we have teachers and principals that are involved and while visiting, I've seen some situations with restraining to make sure the child's okay and some of our teachers are taken a beating.
Janet, you know, we have, I couldn't agree with that more and in that, we've got to get that addressed.
What can we do?
Well, that's kind of where I was, we're in process, I mean, you know, Ms., Ms. Miller and, and, and the team have worked hard at starting to address some of these and Mrs. Strohman's been extremely supportive. Um, but when we have kids that, that behave like that on a regular basis, it also costs a fair amount of money to educate those children as well.
And, but they're hurting our staff members and I'm not just talking one situation. I mean, I, what, what can we do? Is there another agency we can call in to help us?
So, one of the things that we're, we're working on is getting a, a protocol. So if you have a child that has to be restrained multiple days in a row, that's a red flag. Like, we, we need to get a course of action moving and not wait at that point. Uh, we are working at, we're trying to develop some relationships with outside providers. I know, is Ms. Miller here? I had to put you on the spot, but you visited a facility on Monday or last week, last Friday?
Last Friday. I went to Halifax to visit a school-based day treatment facility, um, and it was beautiful. The problem is, it's usually just for Medicaid eligible students. So if the child doesn't have Medicaid, then it comes at an expense to the school system. And, um, we've been involved with multiple regional meetings before about getting day treatment centers, but it's like if you have to provide an elementary teacher, a middle school teacher, a high school teacher, an administrator, and it's just too costly. So this one, um, this one looked better because you didn't have to provide all that. It was really at no cost to the school system, other than the kids that don't have Medicaid that would need those services. So we're trying to bring that here, but at the same time, it's a super blurry fine line between mental health and EC because a lot of the mental health providers that are qualified at a day treatment center aren't going to be able to do like cognitive types of therapies with students that are EC because they're not functioning at that level.
But there's a, but there is definitely a, a need and we act, we do need to get ahead of it and start addressing it and with our employees. Um, our, uh, Lori Trust has said, you know, and, and she, she even says, because the workman's comp we're paying out, we're going to pay it out here, we're going to pay it out there. And, and so we're, we're aware and, and I'm glad you brought it up and I think it's a great discussion and that you, that our board is going to support taking care of our, our employees and then also taking care of our kids that are in great need, um, because they are really struggling. The level of mental health issues that we see, um, it's not things that you saw ten years ago.
Well, and to that point, we don't have enough staff to deal with a lot of these needs. So therefore, we're not able to meet their needs, in my opinion. I don't mean to be...
That's why you have to say that. I agree. So you, you, we have to seek different alternatives and the, the edge, edge of speak on that is going through the continuum. But getting to addressing that situation sooner rather than later, um, is imperative.
Sure.
And it's different than being in an urban setting like a Raleigh where you have facilities two blocks down. In northeast North Carolina, heck, east of ninety-five, there's nothing. So when we talk about residential facilities and you're talking about seeing an eight-year-old across ninety-five, that's, most parents aren't going to love that idea.
I respect that, but that's part of opening up the discussion is to have facilitated, hopefully in an optimistic future, not only for this district, but I'm sure there's other districts that are faced with it.
And, and we've also got a unique situation like you described, uh, you know, there, there are some, some services, you know, just north of us, uh, you know, but something happens when you cross state lines, uh, and, and there's a whole ne- extra set of rules that we have to deal with and, and sometimes we get looked at over the top of the glasses like my dad used to do, uh, and that's never good. Uh, and so, uh, you know, that, that's the kind of stuff we're dealing with, but we're trying to look for services that are nearby, uh, and the nearest nearby, uh, is in another state. Uh, and so, you know, we're trying to see...
Those legal, those students.
And as, as Dr. Lutz said, we're talking about partnerships and we're dealing with some of these students, if we don't have the staff to take care of it, you have the option of partnerships where you're bringing people in to the school site to help you out and help these students, or you're looking for a partner that's close by where the student can go. And that's what the day treatment, you know, option is, students might go to a different facility for their school and their therapy, um, because, uh, there, there are better staff to deal with, you know, some of these crisis situations.
Let me ask you this, Jackie touched on Medicaid, so Medicaid would, would fund the, the, um, therapy.
If to challenge receiving Medicaid.
Right.
If they're basically eligible and they have to go through this, like, certain channels first, like they have to get school-based therapy and be unsuccessful and get attention in home and be unsuccessful, like there's levels that they have to go to in order to qualify.
All right, let me answer this. Um, you know, this would be an option if we had the space available at one of our facilities for you to have someone come in and have an area that would be strictly for that, that would be, um, a lot less financially, you know, bearing the brunt of that. Would that be a possibility or is it have to be off campus?
No, the one I went to, to tour was on campus because that's much more feasible for our district right now than a building. They, the, this specific company, um, they have an onsite campus and an offsite and they say both work really well, but they prefer the onsite because the, the day treatment people and the licensed people are much closer with the teachers and the administrators. It's much more like in the community to help that.
Um, is that full-time at that facility that you toured? Is that, they have a full-time staff for that or is that something that they do on a part company?
They do. The school that I toured, it was two parts. The left side, the left side of the building was elementary and the right side was middle. So they had one for each school. They like to do it like K through A first to try to address those needs before the kids get to high school. Um, they had a licensed clinical social worker or some sort of provider and then they had a care professional that they provided for the, the room. And then students would filter in and out, like depending on what Medicaid approved. If it was six months at four hours a day, then the administrators and the counselors at the school would work to make that child's schedule so they didn't miss any core content curriculum. Um, and then they could go to the day treatment to get like the, the positive messages and the social skills and the mental health treatment, um, for the other part of the day.
That would be wonderful.
It was beautiful.
If you had to guess, and I'm, I'm putting you on the spot, if you had to guess, um, out of our students that are Medicaid, what would be your guess that, that have Medicaid?
We ran some numbers and we have like twenty to twenty-five students district-wide that we thought would be eligible. Um, there's a couple loopholes that are hard to work around because like intensive in home isn't offered on Knox Island, but that's one of the steps that you'd have to go through in order to get there. Medicaid is much more prevalent in the southern end of our county.
Yes.
So, you know, we have a lot of kids in the north of TRICARE that could also benefit from these services, so would we pay a bill to do that? And then going back to what Mr. Strohman said, um, you know, DPI, the state has released the private residential treatment facilities that are available in North Carolina that they want IEP teams to consider first if a student needs that kind of placement, but the closest one being Raleigh and we're tasked with putting that child in, in an environment that's our least restrictive environment when they could go right over the border for the day and then go home to mom and dad at night, especially those young kids. So, um, I reached out to CSEP a couple times and other organizations just to see if they'd be interested in partnering with us, but they're so bogged down with their own mental health, just with the districts that they provide services to that they don't, they're not interested in that right now.
Jamie, what are your plans?
I know you said how many children you thought we had that might qualify through Medicaid or the TRICARE. How many children do you think that we have that would benefit that wouldn't qualify?
Or total? That was your number, right, Janet? Twenty to twenty-five kids that we, you, is that right?
I thought that's that would...
Well, when we made a list, um, just what we were exploring, should we go look at day treatment? Um, we made a list of kids that are either receiving intensive in home or school-based therapy or have visited the counselor's, um, office frequently for some sort of risk assessment that would be, we think would be eligible, um, or good candidates for the day treatment.
And that would be about twenty-five total?
Twenty to twenty-five.
Okay. Well, but how many of them?
Was that K through twelve? It was, it was. And I mean, there...
That would be about your percentage that you would really be looking at, um, in terms of like the four thousand student population, that, that's about spot on.
And they said that each like licensed so person, it's not necessarily a social worker, I keep calling them social workers, had a caseload of about six to eight. So it wasn't an extreme caseload because the services are so intensive that they have to provide.
So you went and looked at it and you like it? You think it's good? So what's our next step?
To meet with my mental health district team on the twenty-fourth and present it all to them.
Okay. So, thank you.
Thank you. That was very... Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions concerning mental health staffing? All right, we've been right along child abuse and related threats to child safety, recommending immediate adoption. Superintendent Strohman.
Thank you. At the last meeting before Christmas break and, and New Year's, um, we asked you to, uh, give us permission to meet some of the mandates and the new state law that came out expanding, um, responsibilities for reporting, um, anything that, uh, dealt with child abuse or, or, uh, child safety. Uh, and so the board acted on that. Well, as, uh, as our friend Murphy of Murphy's Law thing, uh, you know, would say, right